For your viewing pleasure, this broadcast of the Municipal Council Meeting of Alpena is made possible by the funding provided by the City of Alpena. Thank you for your generosity.
Good evening and welcome to the Alpena City Council Meeting of June 19th, 2017.
Johnson?
Here.
Nielsen?
Here.
Noack?
Here.
Sexton?
Here.
Walagora?
Here.
Please rise for the pledge.
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, modifications to the agenda, we do have one, someone would be supplying a wheelchair swing donation at Rich. Greg suggests we put it under a report of officers. C. Okay, so move.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Noack?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yes.
Noack Walagora?
Aye.
Johnson?
Yes.
Anything else? Approve of the minutes for a special session of June 1st, 2017, regular session of June 5th, 2017, and closed session of June 5th, 2017. Citizens appearing for council on agenda and non-agenda items are allowed five minutes each to address your concerns. This is the only time during the meeting that you're allowed to address council. If you would like to do so, please come to the podium and state your name and address for our records.
Good evening, my name is Christina Gatachu. My address is 417 South Second Avenue, Alpena 49707. Like I said, it's Christina Gatachu. I moved here 18 months ago with my husband and two 12-year-old daughters, they're twins. We own our home here in town and have fallen in love with our neighbors, the lake, and all the natural beauty that surrounds us. I've lived in and traveled to cities worldwide, but I remain uniquely impressed with how well-planned the City of Alpena is for providing residents and visitors access to the remarkably stunning lakefront, the nature trails, walkable neighborhoods, so that everyone benefits from the beauty of our environment. When the news broke on June 1st that the President had abandoned the Paris Climate Agreement, it was quickly followed by public statements and commitments of continued support for climate action from more than 1,200 mayors, business leaders, governors, and college presidents. And I was surprised to learn that Alpena, Michigan was not on that list. So, in the last couple of weeks, I've heard from the same, from members of a large chunk of our community. I'm active in a couple of groups. One of them is the People for Social Justice, which organized the March for Science here in town not long ago. They also did the informational seminar online five. I'm also a member of the Action Group for Northeast Michigan. Membership across both of those groups is nearly 300. And I'm here today with support of many of the people in those two groups and ask that our city look at joining the 313 climate mayors and their commitment to adopt, honor, and uphold the Paris Climate Agreement goals. What would a commitment like that look like? Well, I've reached out to the climate mayors group as well as the Michigan Climate Coalition and looking for the language that other cities have used in formal adoption of those goals. I haven't heard back yet from anyone, but when I do, I'd like to come before you again on the agenda next time to share with you what that language is. Beyond the language that cities are using in their public statements, some important points to note about the goals of the Paris Climate Agreement are: Number one, members who sign on are committing to work to hold global warming to below 2 degrees Celsius. And number two, members can independently decide on how they will work toward lowering their carbon emissions, so you can come up with your own plan. One binding aspect of the agreement is that the requirement that cities, or states, or countries, report on their progress. And then last but not least, the Paris Agreement calls out the power of nature, specifically forests, to reduce climate change. So when I look at something like the Tree Planting Partnership Program that's happening here in Alpena, I know we've got the framework in place for signing on already. My last thought to share with you all is how urgent it is that as a community and a city, we have a sustainability plan. The more than four decades-long Brown Trout Festival, the underwater preserve, the local retail and restaurants that benefit from tourists who visit our beautiful shores, they're all engines of our economy and rely on the health of our environment and beautiful lakes around. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Christina. And Christina, just really, just briefly, if you do follow through with a suggested resolution, please get it to our staff as soon as possible so we have time to review it.
Absolutely. I'll give it well ahead of coming.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Consent agenda this evening is pretty long, so if you agree with me. A is bills to be allowed in the amount of $565,760.07. B is one mayoral appointment to the Downtown Development Authority for a four-year term expiring June 1st, 2021, is Kerry Mumrick. C is one mayoral appointment to the Historic District Commission for a three-year term expiring April 1st, 2020, is Don Mabar. D is one mayoral appointment to the Planning Commission for a three-year unexpired term expiring November 1st, 2018, is Gretchen Kirchner. E is one city council appointment to the Thunder Bay Transportation Authority for an undefined term effective July 1, 2017, is Adam Paul. F is a budget amendment, Sewer Collection Department, $17,240 to cover costs of cleanup and three sewer backups. G is a budget amendment, Parks and Recreation Department, $7,000 to cover the cost of additional repair and maintenance expenses. And H is a budget amendment from the General Fund, $2,200 to cover cost of utilities.
May we approve the consent agenda as presented?
Noack?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yes.
Walagora?
Aye.
Johnson?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Move down to proclamations, I have one tonight, it's Pollinator Week. Whereas thanks to the work of honeybees native pollinating insects, butterflies, birds, and other animal pollinators and pollinator species such as thousands of species of bees are essential partners in producing much of our food supply, whereas 80% of the world's crops depend on pollination, insect pollinators including honeybees pollinate products amounting to more than $20 billion annually in the United States. And whereas pollination plays a vital role in the trees and plants of our community enhancing our quality of life and creating recreational and economic development opportunities, and whereas pollinators are critical to ecosystems health and agriculture and increased support for protecting and sustaining pollinators is vital to our survival and the existence of nearly all ecosystems on earth. And whereas if pollinator populations such as the honeybee and many species of butterflies, moths, birds, bats, and other pollinators decline, it is a threat not only to the production of commercial crops but also a wide range of flowering plants including rare and endangered species. And whereas Northeastern Michigan Rehabilitation and Opportunity Center, or NEMROC, Pollination Brigade's goals is to make very significant and positive changes in the environmental quality of the community, the Pollination Litter Brigade is a project of NEMROC and the Supported Employment Program. This program creates meaningful and rewarding work for the people with developmental disabilities who have a strong desire to have a job. This is accomplished by work that will enhance the pollination efforts of bees, butterflies, bats, and birds. The Pollination Brigade creates habitats for bees, butterflies, bats, and birds and also aids in the removal of cigarette litter in the parks, beaches, and other designated areas. Now therefore, in recognition of the importance of pollinator species to agriculture, forest, and grassland environments, and other ecosystems, I, Matthew J. Walagora, by the virtue of authority vested in me as the Mayor of the City of Alpena, do hereby proclaim the week of June 19th through the 25th, 2017, as Pollinator Week in the City of Alpena, and I encourage all citizens to protect and encourage pollinator habitats to ensure the continuation of species that are essential to our habitats, economy, and lives. And this evening, we have Gia Colakeithis and her guests from the Pollination Brigade. All right, next up, we have a report of officers, trapping, spaying, and neutering abandoned cats.
Okay. Counsel wished for me to look into the issue about whether there would be any legal impediment to approving the folks who presented the TNR presentation last meeting. I took a look at the animal control ordinance of the county, there's nothing that would restrict us from doing it. There are several articles on the internet that talk about the benefits of TNR, and then there are some that say it's not everything it's cracked up to be. So, I don't express any opinion to you on the program itself. I think, other than, you know, it's out there and they explain to you what they would like to do in the city. And so from that perspective, there is no legal impediment to doing it. The only thing that I thought counsel should consider is in the spirit of intergovernmental cooperation to run this by the folks at the county to make sure they were okay with it as well, so that we're not stepping on any toes if we start doing it before it's been presented to them. So I don't know if those folks are going to present to them, or if we might want to send a letter to them to say, hey, we're thinking about allowing the folks to do it in the city, is there any objection? So, from that perspective, once again, there's no legal impediment that would stop counsel from approving it to happen in the city.
Again, and they're not here? TNR is not here?
No.
Because I guess from our perspective, it seemed as though it was a presentation and then we just kind of questioned the legality of it. But, I mean, I can certainly call Cam, that's not an issue, as a matter of fact, I will, I just wanted to wait to talk to you first.
Yeah, like I said, there's nothing that would stop us from voting it in if that's what counsel wished to do.
But do we vote it in? Or do we just kind of say?
Well, I think we should, just in the sense that they want to do that, and I think it's wise that not only that counsel approve it, if counsel wishes to approve it, but also that we publicly say, hey, we're in favor of doing this, so that when it begins to occur, citizens are aware of what it is and don't become worried or don't think folks are doing something that they don't have the legal authority to do.
So we would basically be just voting to allow them to do it?
Allow them to do it.
Is there an appropriate, right?
Correct.
Well, I would suggest that we wait until the next meeting, there's no big rush on it, I don't suppose, and I'll talk to Cam in the meantime.
I guess I am focused about whether or not they would work with our Humane Society. Is this one?
They were here. They understand and support the program.
They do support the program, okay.
Yeah, they were here last week when she did the presentation, so.
Thank you.
But it's not a program that's run by here in Humane Society.
I understand.
People do it, so I can do it, you can do it, anybody can do it, yes. If you have a fairytale. So it's not like they can trap the cats and take them to the Humane Society and say, do it. As individuals, we do it.
Don't you take a class or something?
You have to take a class, and then you get a card, and then you can take any cat into any of the local vets for $50, they will fix them and clip their ear.
Take a quick look at our last meeting on YouTube when you get a chance. If you want to see her whole presentation, it's interesting.
That would be a good thing.
Whether it works or not, I don't know, it's not really my concern, I suppose. Because I guess you could find one where you're not.
Yeah, like I said, there are a lot of articles out there, a lot of it praised it, and then, of course, there are some that are negative in the sense that it didn't do what the program was presented to the municipality to do, so there's some objection to it, but, you know, I mean, she presented, I think they already have the three vets lined up that are willing to do it for reduced cost, they've already signed on to it, so they're just looking for counsel's blessing to be able to start doing it.
I'll give Cam a call this weekend. Excellent, so we'll just table that until the next meeting, please. Do you need to vote on that?
I will, just to show that you all agree.
Then we'll table it till the next meeting.
Okay.
Sexton?
Yes.
Walagora?
Aye, sorry.
Johnson?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Noack?
Yes.
All right, next up, we've got service agreements. There are three. I'm going to start with the 2017-18 Service Agreement for Target Alpena Development Corporation.
Yes, we've been doing these now for a number of years, but they started with Target, of having agreements with entities that the council directly funds. So this year, there are three. The one that we've never done one with, it's a little different, is Hunt, and we've never actually had that kind of agreement. But with the others, we have, except for Humane Society, this will be their first year of having an agreement with us. Probably should have had that in place a while back, but just did not. The Target Agreement and MACNE are basically the same as they previously were, other than changing dates, some names, and just updating some of the scope of services. One thing Target did ask, because they now also are getting funding from the county and the township, is rather than doing quarterly reports, of going to semi-annual reports, just to lessen load, I said, from my perspective, I didn't have a problem with that, but they will still, when they do those reports, present them orally still to the council for that. So, they've all been reviewed and approved by the respective boards, and they have been signed, so it will just take our signature to implement those. And the other thing we did change is, even though it was always in the wording of Target, I believe, was that we often were paying after the first meeting in July for the first payment, but then they were often sending us an invoice after that, for that. So, talking to Lucille, those will be after the second meeting, so that gives them time to give us the invoice, and then we actually go through and have the warrant and that at the second meeting of the month and payment is made. Whether it's quarterly, some are going to be quarterly, some are semi-annually. So, you have, before you, Target and MACNE, which are pretty much the same, I'd ask you to approve each one individually. The Here on Humane Society is new, there are some requirements in there, which Cindy explained a little more, she is currently a board member, and it does ask and state that we should have a member from the council on the board. And in talking, the two of us, I think that wouldn't necessarily be Cindy, she's on as a, you know, an at-large, I guess, member. And this is not unusual. Target, we have a member that sits on there. MACNE, we have a member that sits on the board. So this is not anything out of the ordinary, to where we are providing this funding, you know, Hunt, we have a member there from the council. So this is not asking for something that we don't have of others.
Can we, I mean, unless somebody else wants it, we would have two, or can you shift into a position of counsel and relinquish your seat as at-large and somebody else can pick that, or is that something you'd work out independently?
At this point, I'd rather not.
I would like to fill that position unless somebody else wants it.
Should we just do it all at the same time?
Yeah, you can make the appointment tonight as well.
So we'll do three things, we'll do four things.
Four, yeah, after you approve the Humane Society agreement, is then appoint a member to serve.
Does anybody else want to do that?
No.
Greg, okay. Let's start it off then. Has anybody got any questions for Greg regarding the agreement, or anything?
We approve the service agreement between the City of Alpena and Michigan Arts and Culture Northeast.
Second.
Walagora? Johnson?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Noack?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yes.
Jump back up to Target.
I was following.
Oh, I'm on my sheet.
We approve the service agreement between the City of Alpena and Target Alpena Development Corporation.
Second.
Johnson?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Noack?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yes.
Walagora?
Aye.
And I approve anything. We approve the agreement between the City of Alpena and the Here on Humane Society.
Second.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Noack?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yes.
Walagora?
Aye.
Johnson?
Yes.
Does it say how long the term, do you know how long the term is for?
No.
Have they worked it out? I'm just, before we vote to do something, do they have it all worked out in a spot?
Yes, we have an opening on the board, so there's a spot. If there wasn't, we would change our bylaws to make one, but we are working on bylaws right now, there are no term limits. There will be, but right now, there aren't.
It's for life.
Yes.
He's there for life.
Yeah, forever. I move that Councilwoman Nielsen represents the city on the Here on Humane Society Board.
Second.
Noack?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yes.
Walagora? Johnson?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Do I have to stay or no? Yes.
You can call yourself.
Next up is C, the wheelchair swing, Rich.
Look, thank counsel for adding this to the agenda tonight. City staff met with Paul Ettersnowski of the Alpine Alliance Club to discuss a donation project that they would like to undertake to benefit the citizens of Alpena. Basically, they would like to construct and install a wheelchair swing. And basically, in lack of a better term, it's like a large yard swing, but it has a bench on it that allows family members to sit, it also has a ramp that you basically wheel the wheelchair up onto, then flip the ramp up, and then the family members will wheelchair up first and swing. It's another opportunity to improve the quality of life here in Alpena. During the meeting, several locations were discussed, including Starlight Beach and Baby Park near the ban shell. All locations discussed were viable, with the preferred location being near the ban shell. The Lions Club is actually, I got an email today, they've begun cutting the lumber and making preparations for the installation. But as this is a new element to the parks, staff felt it prudent to present to the city council for their concurrence. Staff will oversee the location and review the final product prior to acceptance by the city. This is not something new, they've got plans from where they have been installed before, and very substantial structure, so.
May I ask a question, Rich? I thought we had talked by the pavilion.
That was the other option.
Okay, but I thought that was the one that was decided upon, but maybe it wasn't.
I may have it backwards, I had notes, it'll be by the pavilion.
Or by the ban shell, whatever the tip, whichever way it is.
I stand corrected.
I think it says in here that your staff was still working with the location.
Should that be an independent structure, or will it be with?
It'll be completely independent structure. Ultimately, it'll have a roof structure over it, they may not put that on till fall, but the structure itself, they hope to have it started here in June yet.
That's awesome. Do we need to approve that for you, or are you just?
Yeah, I think we should, just because it is a new element.
Thank you, at either park where it may go.
We'll just leave it at whatever it was you said in your memo.
At a site to be determined.
Site to be determined by staff. I move we allow the Lions Club to work with staff and install wheelchair swing.
Seconds.
Sexton?
Yes.
Walagora?
Aye.
Johnson?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Noack?
Yes.
Thank you, Rich. I'm finishing business, the second reading of ordinance number 17-439, a rezoning of 1161 North Bagley Street from B3 Commercial District to a planned unit development, PUD, for the purpose of constructing a new building. Is that you?
Yes. Consistent with council policy, this would not be read again unless you'd like to hear me read again in open meetings. Just need a vote, yea or nay?
I think we had all of our questions, I am assuming, so answer it the last. I move we approve ordinance number 17-439.
Second.
Walagora?
Aye.
Johnson?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Noack?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yes.
Next is B, Resolution 2017-06, a resolution to execute the Harbor Economic Study Agreement as received from the Michigan Department of Natural Resources.
As a mayor, I recall back in March, I approached council, was granted the authorization through the Porch Collaborative with the help of William Boyk to apply for a grant, as outlined, it's a grant for a study. The local match was $21,140, and the Porch Collaborative is covering the cost of writing the grant, administering the grant, they have the money for that. And the idea is that that $21,000 will get hopefully spread out over 21 communities, so that everybody gets a skin in the game, everybody will be able to use it, and if we don't get all the match money, we simply aren't, the city's not going to be on the upper $21,000, so we simply won't do it. We've set aside $1,000 for the study, so we did get the grant, we were successful, and that's why I'm here, is asking for the resolution, sign the grant agreement, so we can get that back and start working on it. I don't know if anybody has any questions, or?
My only question was that if you get close, do you have a window, or is $1,000 your cutoff that the city would pay?
The window would be, you know, if we get close, I'll come back and see what you would want for a window. I mean, it's, you know, if we can, hopefully, we'll get the $1,000. I've been hammering, beating the bushes, and we've got some money in, and what I've had them do was just send the check to the Michigan Porch Collaborative, so that they're holding money. And then, we've told whatever communities participate, like the one I've got money from so far is the City of Manistee. If we don't do it, the Porch Collaborative will just write them a refund check, but I didn't want to collect all that money and have the City of Alpena.
Right.
Refund checks, it's better for them, but, yeah, I mean, I hope that we'll get it, and if it gets down to where it's not quite that much, then it might be something that the city would worthwhile endeavor to do, and then we would still have the opportunity to resell the product to other communities that get on afterwards, so.
Excellent. Thank you, Don.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I move we approve Resolution 2017-06.
Second.
I think Susan. The only one that came out. What's up?
You're in the middle.
Johnson?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Noack?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yes.
Walagora?
I move we adjourn to closed session to discuss water sewer litigation and the current labor negotiations.
Second.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Noah?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yes.
Walagora?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
So. Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks.
I move we approve Resolution 2017-06.
Second.
I think Susan.
Okay.
You're the only one that found out. What's that?
You're in the middle, eh?
Johnson?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Noah?
Yes.